The minutes of the last meeting.
Motion.
Moved by Pat.
Second.
Seconded by John. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And Mr. Five. Okay, we got a couple of minutes before our public hearing. Eighty-one P.
Yep. Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I know the camera doesn't like me over here, but you guys don't see it. The, um, this is a piece of property, corner of Williams Street. Sebastian. Uh, the property is currently, it's three parcels. There's a, there's a, well, actually, it's, yeah, three parcels. There's a lot here. There's a parcel, there's another small lot here that's, that's non-conforming and not a buildable lot. And then there's this larger piece that entails, it comes around. So what the applicant is proposing to do is to, um, create a new lot here called Lot Three A. It used to be Lot Three. And then take two parcels of land, Parcel Three C, add it to this piece, and Parcel Three B, and add it to this, this former lot line here. This is a pre-existing, non-conforming lot. It, they put an addition on, it didn't meet the setback. So this parcel addition will decrease the non-conformity of this lot so that the setbacks are all met. The only non-conformity would be the area. The zone here is an RC zone, yet the other lots in, in, in the zone are more conforming to this size lot than the RC lot. The other parcel, Parcel Three B, will remain a separate lot, not, not considered a building lot. And then Lot Three A will conform in every area to the frontage, area, um, shape factor. So basically, we're just creating, we're creating this one new lot and two new parcels. But no new building lots because there's existing houses on the two lots that we're, we're actually changing the, the lot lines to.
Three B exists or no?
It's endorseable as submitted.
Three B, this small part of Three B exists. Now, Three B will be this entire piece here. It exists as a, as a very small.
Is that where the trailer used to be?
I think so, yes.
That's why it's like that, okay.
Yeah. It's bounded and everything, so, I mean, it was.
It's not registered, is it?
No, it's not registered.
Any questions for the board?
No. It's possible, I, you know, as long as the applicant realizes it, they're not coming back for Three B for building lot in the future.
They said they may come, they go, they're gonna go to zoning first. They would have to get a, a ZBA variance, so that's, I, that's what I was told, so.
It would be too, obviously.
They will need, if they ever decide to do anything with Three B, they would have to come back.
Considering the, the size of the parcel, there's a lot better way to break this up if they decided they wanted additional lots, so. I know certainly one person on this board that would be sending an unfavorable to zoning.
Well, here again, they would have to, they still have plenty of area on this lot that they could make somehow do something.
They could still add to it.
But they, they don't want to do it right now.
Moved by Pat. Seconded by John. For the discussion, if not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And Mr. Five. Day seven oh five, we'll call the public hearing back.
Good evening. Tom Wickstrom. Last time we were here, we were talking about the bond, if you recall. And, uh, some of the costs of, of the roadway for that bond. So Mirage has talked with his road contractor, and he's gonna fill you in as to what's happened since then, and where we'd like to go from here.
We can't get him. You know, they're trying to prove to me that. If he goes under, I gotta go look at my price, not his price.
Walk around.
Okay, I, I got some of these figures here from a road contractor, okay? Who has done a lot of work for me. And to, to supplement this one, I have some of this cost for the material for this job, which, which are the actual costs of.
Is that one four and one three?
Huh?
Is that one four and one is that one three?
This is, this is, this is for the whole project though.
Just out of curiosity.
Yeah.
On your material costs, which I don't have a problem with.
Yeah.
Did you factor in? Because if the town of Milford undertook it, then there would be a.
Material cost would not change though. The, the pipe, pipe cost is still the pipe cost from Putnam Pipe.
Are you sure? No, 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 no. I'm, I, my question is, do you know? The town of Milford would get the same rate, that's what I'm asking.
Probably better than I do.
I, better's better, but more, more is the problem. So I just, I didn't know if you facted that in, that's all.
I was talking to, to the town, and, and, I mean, yeah, the town, for the, to the contractor, for the town, they give a better rate than I do.
Could I just clarify for the board? The memo that was in front of you from the town engineer?
Town engineer. I talked to the town.
The attachment was a prior submittal from Mirage. So what he's giving you tonight updates what was originally attached to Bonnie's, but I don't think that was necessarily the whole point of her memo anyway, so.
The memo was, first of all, she tried to get some information, she got no info, she couldn't get any.
Well, I think after I sent it, she still had, she said, "I'm still looking for more." So about three-thirty, I had a long talk with her, and I, I said, "What more do you need for this road?" Has got drainage, all the drainage pipe, and all the material is there. Water lines, I have the cost for the water line from Putnam Pipe, and the labor cost, and the material which goes in. The granite, I have the granite prices and the installation on that. What more do you need?
Well, this isn't our job.
I know.
We don't do this, normally, we don't do this. We give an approval on our subdivision. You go in, you build it, when you ask for a release of lots.
That's when you bond it.
Then the town engineer comes up with a bond, and that's what the bond is.
Right. So why is this different this time? That's our question.
Because you're trying, you're trying to go through a process of not putting in the full bond or whatever is left.
No, no one ever said that.
But, yeah, not getting the.
Well, then, I'm not sure why we're dealing with this now. When you come in, when you come in for your first, for your first release, we'll deal with it, depending on how much of the road is done. But you need to understand that we're not gonna bond a portion of it at that point, at that point in time, which is what you want to do. This board wants a bond for the, for the, we're not phasing this. You may be, we're not. So when you come in, the bond is going to be for all of the construction work, at least on the main roadway. If that's the case, we're fine. We, I don't think there's any issue at all. But, but there's this thing where, where we keep hearing phase one, phase two, we wanna bond phase one. I don't, I don't think when you come in and ask for a lot release, this board is going to sit and say, "We only want a bond for you to finish phase one." That's my, that's my take of what I've heard here. And I'm not even voting on this, but that's my take from not even going to the first meeting, so.
Okay.
But I don't, the, other than that, there's not gonna be any difference. But I think the reason why we've made a point of it is because we keep hearing this phasing issue.
So because of the phasing issue, we are going through all this exercise? Is that what we are saying, though?
No, you are, you are, we're not. We, we, in other words, when you start the road, and you're gonna do it, when you ask for a release of lots, we're gonna give you a price to finish the road from, uh, Fisk Mill Road to tie it, tie it to Field Pond Road.
Okay.
The cul-de-sac, we don't care about.
Okay, so, so if I just go back and do a little bit of it, and come back to release the lots and put a binder, partial binder, you're gonna ask me to bond the whole road, even though I may not do all the road? Basically, that's what you're saying.
Right.
You may phase the construction, but the board is looking at approving a subdivision in its entirety. The road connecting, which is the way it was drawn.
Well, I, I know, we have, after the preliminary, we had come back and discussed also with the, to see if the board was willing to work with that. And that's why we kept going that way, though. But if the board doesn't have any desire of phasing it that way, then you can tell me, then, we don't have.
Well, it's getting to be, it's getting to be too hard, and I don't think it's, it's right for, for, for us. Ask all the town engineers to start going through this. It's not their job. You, every, every other subdivision, they come in, they get their approval. You put it in, what's, what's there, and then what happened? The part about the, the cul-de-sac, or whatever the name of that cul-de-sac is, we don't care.
Until they ask for a lot release on the cul-de-sac.
Unless they ask, ask for a lot release is there. Other than that, we care about making sure the road is tied in all the way to Field Pond. Now the town's protected.
Okay, so I, so can we call that section as a phase two then? Is that what you, maybe?
Can I just, can I just say something?
Certainly.
You're treating this as if you owned a section, and you came in front of us, and we approved already, previously, one section, which we would get a, no, no, no. But that's in theory, because when you're talking phasing, in your mind, you're, you think, "I'm gonna do one section, and I wanna bond that one section. And then when I move on to the second section, we'll talk about bonding the second section." And we're looking at this as a singular subdivision because a previous applicant came in front of us and wanted to increase Field Pond by, I think, six or eight lots. I don't recall the exact number, and we said no. So here's our problem. If you came to us and wanted to extend Field Pond for six or eight, we would've said no. If you came to us and said, "I wanna come off of Fisk Mill and only build twenty houses," we would've said no. At the end of the day, we're looking for continuity of connection of the road. We said that we would listen to your, your, your bonding mythology, but at the end of the day, what we're saying is, we just want the assurance that the road will be connected. That's all, that's really all our task.
And I think I'm, by giving you some of the numbers and the way I'm proposing, I think I'm giving the kind of good security.
So you're saying that the entire road's gonna be one-four?
One-four, okay.
So you, and with that said, so you're telling, if, if I'm understanding you correctly, then you're willing to put up a bond of one-four?
No, no.
See?
No, 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 that's not the way, well.
And this is where the confusion, and forgive me, but this is where the confusion's starting to rest.
If I, I'm not gonna, right now, the, the numbers which we are talking are for the total road. I'm, uh, before I even come to you, I'm, it's, I want to do the first phase which, in my mind. I know you haven't said that, okay? Let me clarify. So I'll do that one, and then, at that time, I'm gonna come back and ask you to release that first phase, and let me know how much is the bond for that one, let's say, okay? You come back and tell me, you, you need to put about $300,000 after I bond that part of the road. Just listen to me, and then you, so. And then what I am saying is, to, to give you some security, first of all, I got about 300, 400, whatever it, the bond number came for the first phase, I'm gonna put it there. And then, as I keep selling the houses, like I suggested last time, I'll start putting 300, 30,000 each, okay? So by the time I finish this side, I have 450,000 plus 300,000, about 800,000 already there for that small section of the road, though, okay? With, this side is more than the other anyway, okay? So you are pretty much secured at that point. That's, that's the way I'm proposing.
I'm secured in theory, and that's all, because in theory, in order for this to work, you have to sell homes. No, 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 but just follow along, 'cause I, 'cause I listened to what you just said. At the end of the day, what you wanna do is you wanna bond phase, what you call phase one. And again, I'm using your vocabulary, not mine, because I don't consider this any phasing. But we're gonna play along to get along.
Okay.
My problem, or the problem of the board is, how do we know the road gets complete? And some of these are a slight hang-up because you need to sell to put money towards the advancement of when you continue. And almost, if we read between the lines, I know you didn't say this, but if we read between the lines, what you're basically telling us is, you will not start, nor will you complete the road that connects, uh, Field Pond until you basically virtually sold out.
The house.
The houses. And that's where the, that's, now this is where the stumbling block is, because again, all we want to know is how we're gonna get the assurance that the road will be adequately completed. That's where the stumbling block is. So we're, we're, we're talking the same language in theory, but our approach is slightly different, and you're not giving me. Or you're not giving this board any real type of sense of, yes, this is how I'm gonna complete the road, absent you selling homes or anything else, 'cause that's where our problem is.
Let me suggest something else and see what you think about it. You really want to have this connection, really, from here to here, right?
Absolutely.
Okay, so what I would do, can.
I don't care about Barbara.
Can we call this as a phase two? And what I would do is, I'll go back and do this part and get you.
Listen, don't, I don't, don't, who cares about Barbara? Call it an afterthought, it doesn't matter.
But the thing is, what I'm saying is, instead of doing this road, I'm almost up to here now, okay? But if I have to do this road, I'm up to here. I might as well do this and get.
Precisely, now you, now, hey, listen, now we're getting somewhere.
That's what they were saying all along.
Well, no, I think, I was looking at the whole thirty, eh, four hundred now. If I take about five, six hundred, and then I have to do the water line to join that one. Right, right, but what I'm saying is initially.
You'll do the water line eventually, but you don't.
Well, what if we're connecting a field pond?
No. You're still gonna have to go out to Whitewood eventually.
I don't know what type of deal you made with the water company, that's absent of this.
Well, that we will.
Uh, that's absent of this, so you heard, we're not gonna touch it.
I, I think, maybe if that's the way the board wants to go, because it's a.
This way, we both know that the road gets completed.
That's, careful. Yeah, we got, whichever way it goes, it's, if you go that way, then your bond is, your bond is less.
Yeah, I think, I'll, I'll come back and.
We don't need to go on.
Not right now.
No.
We don't need to deal with it.
No, I'm gonna just go back.
The bond would be less when you ask for a lot.
That's right, yeah.
Right now, we're just regular subdivision.
That's your three.
Yes.
We've done everything, then, we answered all your questions, you could actually vote on this tonight.
Well, in theory.
I don't think so.
No, I mean, we, there was nothing outstanding then.
No, but your plans are still showing those, those segments.
Well, it's just a one-sheet phasing plan.
Right.
Because remove it for the, it's its own separate sheet, all you gotta do is.
So none of that shows up on the other ones?
Yeah, I mean, you're not gonna sign it tonight, but by the time we get it around endorsing, the, the, the complete set would be there, and it would be no reference to phasing any longer. Yeah, no, that's, that's fine.
Anybody else got any questions? This is still being a public hearing, is anybody in the audience got any questions?
Jim Rule in Forty-Nine Park Street, representing Nipmuck Rod and Gun Club, abutted to the property. At the first public hearing, I think you suggested a access to Fisk Mill Pond and a possible parking area.
Is that, is that, I think that's off of that stub road? I think you discussed.
It was right there at the intersection of Barbara and.
It was right in here.
Yes.
All right, yeah. Yeah, I mean, is that something that's etched in stone? Is that something that the developer has already?
No, we haven't, I haven't done that yet.
We haven't gotten that far, was it?
It would be a condition of approval.
What's that?
It would probably be a condition of, what you, I mean, if you made a motion, that might be a condition of your approval.
Well, again, I certainly would like to see something to that, to that level put in there. I think it makes sense if you, ultimately, you're going to deed that piece over to the town. I think to have access to it only makes sense. And again, I'm only asking for a gravel lot with some sort of, uh, natural, uh.
Yeah, no.
Wood boundary is all I was asking for.
Sure.
But isn't that part of the lot that you would?
No, 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 that's part of the open space.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, it's part of the open space, correct.
That would be.
No, it's not a private building lot, it's part of the open space, right.
That land is, would be deeded to the town of Milford.
Yes.
For public access to Fisk Mill Pond.
Yes.
And I, I, we're just, we're just concerned about the way that Fisk Mill Pond is now laid out. It's half, the boundary goes through the center of the pond, and half it is in Milford, half it is, is in Upton. And in, in the past, it's been more or less a private pond, because it was abutted by Nipmuck Rod and Gun Club, and I think it's three or four houses that have waterfront property. And in the past, the club has stocked the pond with fish and done weed control. Matter of fact, they, they have a hearing, I think, with the Concom to, uh, they, they put like seven or eight thousand dollars into weed control, and, uh, in the last year, the dam was in disrepair, it fell apart, and the club had to go to, the owner of the dam is, uh, a, a realty corporation, it was the former Draper Corporation. So they control the dam, so we had to petition them to repair the dam. And it just, what, what the club's concerned about is, now, if Milford has public access to the pond, I don't think the club is gonna do any more, you know, as far as expense to the pond. Like, they stock it with twelve fishing derbies, and if it's. We're thinking, maybe the, if the town of Milford wants to take on some of these responsibilities, if they do put in a public access to the pond, and are they gonna control, like, you know, what type of boats and engine, that sort of thing, and, at least upon, I mean, it's, it's something that the town.
No, there's no, there's no boat access, and this is, we're talking about putting in a few parking spots to be able to access.
Yeah.
Your, your question about the town taking it over or anything would have to go to the selectmen, it's got nothing to do with us.
And there's no upland access, I don't believe, from this area you're talking about along the subdivision road into the pond.
The green that you see is all wetland, plus the pond, the pond is way over in here.
Oh, you can't get there from here.
Actually, this, this line that you see here is the limits of the pond, just way over here.
So what would be the purpose of putting in a parking space for access if?
Passive recreation, people can wa, I mean, it's not a swamp, you can walk through whatever.
You gotta walk through wetlands.
You're not gonna be able to take a boat or a canoe or a guy.
It's not directly accessed.
No, it's not directly accessed in order, there's no actual frontage on, upland frontage on the pond itself.
All right, so that, that was just some of their concerns.
Anyone else? None, mostly.
The, uh, the ninety days is up on this, on the twenty-second. And you have another meeting on the twentieth, just for informational purposes.
I have no other concerns. Again, I would still like to see the access granted. And the only other consideration I would have is just to ensure that everything else has been satisfied through Bonnie. As far as I'm concerned.
Yeah, we do have a.
The bonding issue has just been resolved.
We just have resolved, and that was the only outstanding issue.
I, I just.
That's the last meeting.
Again, I was prepared more to discuss the bonding than I was to discuss this. So if you will indulge us and allow us to continue this to the next meeting, just to ensure that everything has been satisfied, if that works for you.
I think I'll find the way, because I, I wanna make the boat feel better connecting, though, on the whole thing, though, okay? That way, we don't have to go through excess cost on that one anyway.
And that'll, that'll give the applicant a chance to, to meet with Bonnie and, and verify that everything's, and we need to do that sooner rather than later. Because waiting till the day before the meeting or the day of the meeting.
No, no, no bond, just, just.
But what do I need to talk about?
Just to verify with Bonnie.
Do we have a last letter from her, though? Isn't her last letter a pretty much a clean letter that we have? On the last subdivision letter that we had, that didn't address bonding?
Oh, maybe then.
My problem is, is I don't remember if everything's been satisfied or not, I was.
No, it was.
Yeah, you can do that, I'm just saying, there's no reason to keep the.
There's a woman in the back who has a question, though.
Yes? This is probably a dumb question, but I'm a dumb woman.
No, 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 no.
Who are you?
You have a name and address?
No, do I have to tell you?
Yes, yes.
My name is Cindy Oldfield.
On TV. Yes, you do.
No, I don't read that. Yeah, you do. Oh, you don't really need to hear me on cable. My name is Cindy Oldfield. I also go to the Nipmuck Rod and Gun Club.
Ma'am, address, please.
Oh, Twenty-seven Coolidge Road, oh, oh, no, I'm sorry, Two-Forty-Six Congress Street. That was my previous address, um, here in Milford. I go to the, the gun club, um, 'cause I think it's a valuable thing to carry forward, even though I don't shoot or do any of these other things. There's not much left here to protect, um, you know, the, the hotlands, the, you know, the woodlands, for the animals, for anything else. And, you know, some of the things that the guys like to do, like the shooting and the archery and that kind of stuff. And is there anywhere along the line that, when they go to sell the property, that they are gonna be at least told that there's a shooting range across the street, so there's no negative feedback later? So it doesn't come back to bite us in the ass?
I believe they have to.
All right, that, that would be required, then, right?
I believe they have to.
It's required, it would be required if a, if the person buying it has a, a Realtor that they're hiring. If they're using the Realtor of the.
Seller.
The developer, they don't have to tell you.
One thing I will point out, I, I think that the signage down there is pretty difficult.
It's pretty obvious.
Pretty difficult to, uh, to really overlook. I think you guys have done a remarkable job with identifying your property and what it is. So I, I, there's always buyer beware, but again, I, that's without, that's beyond the scope of this, what this board's capable of enforcing.
And again, the state has got a, uh, a law that says. Because of, the noise, I mean, cannot, if, for a, uh, existing gun, uh, club or something, cannot be, they cannot shut the, the gun club down.
Okay, thank you.
And also, Cindy, um, the, the closest lot that will be developed to anything that's going on with the Rod and Gun Club is this first lot right here. And that house would be constructed at least three hundred feet in from the road before it's actually constructed. So then you've got the road width, and then you've got another couple hundred feet by the time your shooting area is, the area that you have across the street. So it's well beyond the five hundred feet that, that you have to be concerned with.
Yes, sir.
Peter Lanciano, Sixty-Six Whitewood Road.
Sir?
Yes.
Can you just repeat that one more time?
Sure, it's, uh, Peter Lanciano, Sixty-Six Whitewood Road.
Sir, can you just spell that, please, I'm sorry?
Oh, L-A-N-C-I-A-N-O.
Sorry about that, thank you. That's why we wanted to spell it correctly.
Saying it again fast doesn't help.
Um, just a, a couple of footnotes. Uh, one is, I actually live a long distance from the gun range, and you can really hear the gun range. So, you know, this issue that she brings up is a real issue for the members of the club. I, I'm very supportive of the club. Uh, they have an archery range, which, you know, some of the three D is in the direction of some of the houses, okay? And that's something people need to be aware of. I've had arrows come into my backyard, okay? It happens by accident, but these things, they really do happen. So, you know, she has a valid concern, and I would hate to see anything happen to the gun club as a result of that. Uh, the other thing I'd like to point out is that the cul-de-sac addition area, which, um, goes into a lot of wetlands filling, is actually a, a great concern. I spoke at the Conservation Commission, and they, they didn't seem to be too concerned about the conservation issue. And, uh, you know, we have a big problem with this pond filling in. I'm sure that, uh, others who are familiar with the Rod and Gun Club are very aware of this problem. The depth of the pond has been getting less and less because of a huge amount of silt that's running off of Whitewood Road and working its way into various parts of the, uh, pond and stream. And the addition of that additional cul-de-sac is only gonna increase that problem. Uh, you know, I brought this up last time. I've been told that there are remediation issues there, but there are also remediation issues all the way down Sixty-Six Whitewood Road, and it hasn't remediated anything over the last twenty to thirty years. So this is a big issue, and, uh, you know, we don't want this pond to become so filled in that it becomes nothing more than a mud hole, much like we've seen happen elsewhere in Milford, when a lot of effort wasn't put into making sure the water was properly preserved.
As Mr. Lanciano said, he did speak at the Conservation Committee meeting, and I did explain at that time, and, and it was actually confirmed by other members who spoke, who lived on Whitewood Road, that there is sediment that comes from Whitewood Road. There's runoff that comes down Whitewood Road. There is no catch basin, manhole drainage system in Whitewood Road. Everything runs along the, the shoulder of the road, and it washes out, and it gets in. What we're proposing is a, is a, is a roadway built to subdivision standards with curbing, catch basins, drain manholes, and, and, and that would take discharge, runoff from this big hill and direct it to a totally different location other than the areas here that they're concerned with, you know? Any, any sanitation.
Anyone else? It's the pleasure of the board.
Close the public hearing and take it under advisement.
That's second.
We moved in second, and we ta, closed the public hearing and taken it under advisement. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? And Mr. Five.
You're on.
Oh, excuse me, an abstention.
Thank you.
Good night.
Yep. Well, all I got's the originals. Huh, you've got one?
You didn't need Bob?
As long as you've got.
Okay, babe, what's- Good night, babe.
Uh, site plan review, Medway Road, McDonald's.
Let me read through, uh, Babe, while he's putting it up? Yeah, it's site plan review application, McDonald's USA, one forty-three, one forty-seven Medway Street. The applicant requests site plan approval to construct a drive-through restaurant with associated driveways and parking lots on the subject property. Uh, the existing drive-through restaurant building is to be razed. The proposed site plan is a result of numerous meetings with the applicant's engineers. The new building will be situated generally in the same location as the existing building. The onsite circulation is being improved with the utilization of a dual-lane, dual-kiosk ordering system, as well, uh, as with the provision of an internal, uh, onsite circulation pattern around the building. Another major traffic improvement will be a two-way drive extending through the Easterly, uh, expanded Easterly parking area to the new access onto Beaver Street. This configuration will allow for customers needing to go west on Medway Street after leaving the site to first exit, uh, left onto Beaver Street, uh, to get a left turn, green arrow at that intersection, and then proceed west on Medway. This will eliminate the need to try to take left turns exiting the property. Uh, I reviewed the site plan and find that all applicable zoning requirements appear to be met, and I recommend approval, uh, subject to relevant agency comments. And you have favorable from-
I'll go, I'll go.
You'll do them? Okay.
For the record, John Cusick with, uh, Bowler Engineering with offices in Southborough. Um, we have a pretty straightforward application before you. We're essentially looking to tear down the existing, uh, McDonald's restaurant on one oh nine and construct a new one in its, in its place. Uh, prior to starting and coming up with formal designs, uh, as Mr. Duncan had mentioned, we had multiple meetings with, with, with he and staff, just to kind of go over what we're looking to do, try to figure out what concerns there would be, um, uh, from the town's standpoint. And we incorporated those into the, uh, the site plan. So essentially, the, the, the building is going up in exactly the same spot as the, uh, the existing. It is a slight reduction from the building, the existing building's about fifty-eight hundred square feet. Uh, the new footprint is about forty-one hundred square feet. Uh, it's about a hundred and twenty-two seats within the existing restaurant, it's about seventy-nine seats proposed. As you can imagine, as the, the, the business has changed, drive-through is more, more of the business than, than indoor dining, thus the, thus the reduction. Uh, the perimeter of the site is, is pretty much unchanged. Um, the one item that was very, uh, very important when we, when we met with, uh, with, with Mr. Duncan and, um, and staff, had to do with the access. This driveway coming into the site is, is unchanged, circulation around the site is unchanged. Today, if you're familiar with the site, you can have, you can kind of come out left or come out right. And it was a big concern with the, the folks taking the left-hand turn out. So they asked us to, to preclude that from the plan, which we've done. So now this is the right turn only, and to allow customers to still head in the westbound direction, we've actually punched the side parking area out, so you could get access to the signal and come out this way. So I think from a circulation standpoint, it's a, it's a huge improvement over what's there, and it gets rid of that undesirable movement that, that exists today. Uh, another benefit, as I mentioned, based on just the business changing to more of a drive-through model, uh, McDonald's has gone through, uh, really standard updates through the years. One thing they do now in all of their, their restaurants is add the, the side-by-side ordering. Uh, for those of you who are not familiar with it, it's essentially two ordering stations, uh, the purpose of which is to really speed up the, uh, the ordering. If you have somebody here with a large order, uh, you could have multiple cars keep the, uh, really keep the, the process going. That has a benefit of getting rid of the queuing that you typically see, uh, and thereby eliminate any impacts with the road that might otherwise occur with, with single ordering. Uh, additionally, based on this, there is a slight reduction in impervious area on the, on the property, even though we are working within the, generally within the perimeter area. We have pulled back, you'll notice existing parking, I don't know if you can see this red line, it kind of comes up to where my thumb is, similar to the front, it comes up here, we have parking stalls right in the front by these driveways. We've pulled those back into the site, provided compliant landscape buffer around the front with the compliant plants and shrubs and, and what have you. Beyond that, infrastructure to the site is there today. We have met with the, uh, the sewer department, um, writing a Franklinton oversized grease trap, larger than what we need by code, but it was something that was asked of us, we have built that into the application. Putting the, uh, the building on a sprinkler system today, I don't believe it is today, it will be under the proposal. And really a fully, fully compliant plan. So, uh, with that, I could certainly go into additional detail, um, with your answer, any questions you have, that's, that's the gist of it.
Now, we'll go through the letters, Vani's giving approval, Spotty, the typical open road opening, transfer of the permits. Fire Department's approved it.
They want a hydrant.
Yeah, well, there's a high digit.
Yep, yep, we can, we can add the hydrant.
It's on the plan or you, or you need to add it?
No, it was a comment letter, we, we don't have an issue with, with, with installing the hydrant.
You haven't got it on the plan yet?
No, when we submitted the plan, that was our comment, but we don't, we don't have an issue with adding. Yeah, they, they asked us to put it, I think, in this location, we're bringing the water line.
You're gonna come in with the driveway on, come back with a plan with the driveway onto Beaver Street too?
Oh, that's there. Oh, that's, that, that was, that was on there. But they just asked for a, for a hydrant, I think, over, uh, over here.
Uh, the water company, uh, they got their, their, just their concerns of their, of what you use for materials. Commission of disability. Maybe where they're, uh-
Yeah, yeah, we don't have, um, any, they're clarifying a couple of notes we had in the plan, which we have no issue with. The, the really, only, the one comment they had, we started the, the ADA stalls are now up against the building, which is a, which is a good thing now, it's much easier getting in and out of the building, you don't have to cross, um, traffic lanes. They just wanted this ramp pushed over a few feet, which again, that's something, along with the hydrant, well, we, we don't have a concern with, we'll absolutely add that to the final plans to be endorsed.
Okay, uh, I like it.
You're eliminating the little play area, are you?
Yes, yep, yeah, there's, uh, there'll be no, uh, no play area.
That's good.
No.
Where you wanna go on Friday nights?
Okay, yeah, that's-
Oh, I used to hate that play area.
I know, I know.
Yeah, actually, I just stand corrected, there might be some small in, inside, there won't be any, anything.
Yeah, but, yeah, that one particular big spot is making it, yeah.
Pat, go ahead.
That's a good idea.
Can you tell me, with your new proposed exit onto Beaver Street, what's, how many cars, I guess I'm gonna use the word queuing, from the light to your exit?
Uh, you probably have enough room for about, for, for, you're saying from here, here back, is that what you're looking for?
Forty, it's about sixty feet.
Yeah, you'd have about three cars back.
Is your proposal to put a sign that says, "Do not block"?
Um, no, I know-
I can't see your notes, because if, if you think I can read that, then I can't.
I know you can't, no, no, there was, um, when we spoke with, uh, with Vani, she asked, uh, we had a sign over here that said, uh, "No right turn" sign, you know, essentially coming out, not having people turn this way.
Yes.
Um, and then some "Do not, um, do not enter" signs over here as well, um, excuse me, "Do not enter" signs facing, facing this way. Uh, but we don't have a, a "Do not block" uh, the intersection sign, we certainly could add that, are you referring to-
No, no, I was just, no, I wasn't, I was just curious.
No, because it's a driveway, it isn't an intersection.
It's not an intersection, I was just curious what you're, my only other, I guess, criticism is, I actually would prefer that all traffic get, uh, exited onto Beaver Street, to be perfectly honest with you, and that you close in the Medway Road. To be perfectly honest with you.
No, I think that'd really bog it down, truthfully.
I don't think it would. I think it'd be less confusing, to be honest with you, if you only had one true way in and one true way out.
Well, if it's a right turn only, I doubt very much if people are gonna try to go left, especially there.
Oh, well, listen, it says right turn, doesn't mean you won't try to go left, that's my problem.
I know, there's one coming out of the, uh, shopping plaza just down the street, same thing. And I've never seen anybody take a right, uh, take a left.
Oh, coming out of the bank, you mean?
Yeah.
No, out of the main, out of colds.
Colds, that's what I meant, I'm sorry.
Main entrance is right out only, the, the first entrance, the-
I think if you were gonna do that, then I would probably, eh, eh, again, my, my first instinct would be to eliminate it. But that said, if you don't want to eliminate it, which is fine, then I would actually make sure that the curve is in such a manner that it's physically impossible to go anything but right. I just think that, you know, unfortunately or fortunately, to try to control traffic, it's easy if you shoot them one direction rather than multidirectional, that's, that's just me thinking out loud.
Well, I initially was thinking that way too. The problem with having all of the exiting traffic going on to Beaver Street, especially if, uh, uh, some percentage of it's obviously gonna keep going east on, uh, Medway, is that when you exit onto Beaver Street, if you're not, uh, intending to go up to the light and take a left to, uh, uh, proceed back west on Medway, you need to cross all three lanes to get in the right turn lane, uh, if you're gonna go east on, on-
No, I understand that, but you, but, but you're also, it, it's not like, um, with, with the benefit of the light only being sixty feet away, it's not like you're gonna have, uh, fifty mile an hour traffic essentially coming down that road that makes it impossible. That's, that's why I think that you're only sixty feet from the light, I, again, it's, it's- If you don't, again, my first instinct would be to eliminate Medway Road. That said, I'll be more than amenable, if you make it, much more of a sweep that you can only physically take a right-hand turn. Because I'm not overly satisfied with the way you, to me, it's a little too gradual.
Well, the state's gonna ultimately determine the precise, the precise design of that, so.
That's fine, but again, I'm, I'm not, it's one or the other.
First entrance, first entrance isn't too bad.
Yeah, and I can just respond on, on two issues for, for why it is, is what it is. One reason why we don't wanna, well, the two reasons why we don't want to bring all the cars out this way, from a traffic standpoint, again, we don't have a huge queuing distance, so we don't want all the cars coming out this way, because then, if you're over, overloading this area right now, you'll have the potential the cars will start pulling out if it's queued up, and you might have somebody potentially blocking, you know, coming out here, so you don't want that. It's good to have that dispersion of traffic if someone's heading towards the highway, they can come straight out that way. The other issue that we have is we have to get our, our trucks in and out of that site, so we can't eliminate that. That's how the trucks will go, the trucks won't, won't really be able to make much of that maneuver. Sometimes it's easier just to come, come out that way.
Yeah, I know, but I'm also thinking if they're gonna queue, let them queue on your property rather than the roads, but that's near the end of their-
Yeah, I, I think the, the one thing to point, I mean, right now, it is, it is full access this way, I think this is a great improvement over-
Again, if we're gonna do it, if you're gonna dump them all over Beaver Street, I think it should, if it was back a couple hundred feet, I think that would be, that would be better.
Yeah, we don't control the land.
Yeah, push back further, that'd be much easier.
Not, not that close.
The second entrance, you probably could, you probably could vary the width. Take the, take the westbound side and start it out at twenty and a half, and then neck it down to eighteen or something at the front entrance, which would probably force, you know, if you were to do that, you'd end up with more of a curve, you'd end up with that sweep being more pronounced, so it would be more difficult to come back and take a left.
I think I still- Yeah, I still have to keep, keep it wide there to get a truck out of there as part of, um, part of the drive-in.
That's why I only brought you down to eighteen.
Yeah.
I would assume that a truck can ea, can easily make eighteen turning radius, as a matter of fact, I can almost guarantee it.
We still have to convince District Three, so.
That's, that's a different story, Larry, I don't really, that's, that's not our issue.
That's not what do it, yeah.
Yeah, we'll, we'll require a DOT, um, access for their, their standards.
Okay, uh, when you do come back, uh, I know you got a, you got the, you said you put it in the plans, but if you have a letter from the, get the letter from the sewer department.
I've, I've got an email, I asked for the letter, I've got an email I can show you where it says they approved it at their hearing. Um, I asked for the letter, I just didn't, didn't hear back, but I can kind of show you that, just so you take my word at it.
I just tried to get it for the next meeting, that's all.
Okay. Keep trying.
He's pretty good, he's pretty good about responding.
Yeah, eventually.
How's the drainage work on, on the site?
He's been getting better.
Uh, same as it does today, we're not making any, um, any-
I don't know how that is, I-
Yeah, no, no, I know, it's just, uh, so essentially, it's deceptive, I originally would have thought everything drained to the back, but it drains to the front. So we have a couple of catch basins here, one in the front, everything comes out to the street. Very high, high water to the back, so everything kind of heads out this way. Um, what we're doing is replacing the existing catch basins on site with water quality units, uh, to get some additional treatment. It's all going to the same place.
Any issues down there, Babe, with flooding, do you know of?
No.
Further down?
I'm fine.
Yeah, no, not, not here.
Nothing, nothing, yeah. Very high water.
What are we gonna do, be on a table or?
No.
Yep.
Continue? To prove subject to the changes, or what do you-
Changes first, I'm concerned, I'll make a motion, we prove subject to the-
What are the changes, because you-
We want to take a look at the, the, I would, I would think we can take a look at that second, first, whatever, what driveway you want to call it. On Medway Road, the, the second exit, and then, uh-
Sewer letter.
Getting the letter from the sewer department, yeah, just having a final letter, and I don't think there was anything else, was there?
Making it more pronounced.
That was it.
It's four ninety-five entrance that they gotta do it for. Oh. It's, they're within the, they're within the zone, they're within the-
I didn't think they were within the zone there, but they're-
Yeah, Beaver Street is, yeah, Beaver Street is.
Yeah, Beaver Street.
Joe, did you make a motion?
Yes.
Okay, so we got the, uh, that, the sewer, and, uh-
Yeah, I think it was just the hydrant.
The hy, the hydrant, adding the hydrant on the plans.
And we got the, uh, commission of disabilities, uh-
Yeah, it was, it's really just moving the, the ramp a few, a few feet that way, so that's-
We address those. Uh, I got a motion by Joe.
I'll second.
Second by John. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, opposed, unanimous of five.
Thank you all.
Okay, next we have amended site plan for One National Street. Those are gonna go. This is, uh, what is it, this one?
Senko Bane still.
This is Senko Bane.
Yeah, well, Senko Bane, no, it's Shank.
Berulia. French.
Foster Forbes. Everybody, everybody here. That's all the guys at Foster Forbes.
That I remember it as.
That's right.
It's having Foster Forbes at National Gap, or, uh, Glass.
No, Foster.
Foster Forbes.
American National, can't prove it.
I never pushed a mother national, a national street.
All right, Michael. Okay, ready?
Yeah.
For the record, my name's Mike Dean with G and H, Gary Aaron Hellman Engineering, here representing Veralia, which is One National Street, also known as, way back when, Foster Forbes and Senko Bane Containers. Uh, the site is shown, here's National Street, okay, in here, going straight up the page, National Street and the railroad is shown in this area here, on the eastern portion of the site. The site consists of thirty-four, just over thirty-four acres of industrial zone land, shown in the highlighted pink here, that's the perimeter. The building, existing building shown here, industrial plant, been there since the early seventies. And that's just over three hundred and fifty-five thousand square feet. And that's just over three hundred and fifty-five thousand square feet. Site was, this is amended site plan, the site was most recently in front of the board in two thousand and ten, where they, they did some substantial improvements down on the southern portion of this site here. That was an oxygen plant, also referred to as the BSA plant. There was, um, that was installed and there were some major upgrades in the drainage in the southern portion of the site back in two thousand and ten. The site is serviced by municipal water, there's a loop around the building, that's highlighted there in the blue, and municipal sewer, sewer drains out towards the southern direction, towards Mellon Street. The area that we're in front of the board tonight, for what's referred to as the abatement project, is taking place in this general area here, in the eastern portion. There's an access road that comes down at the end of National Street and loops around the back. There's also some spur, existing spur lines shown right in this general area. So, that's the area that we're dealing with tonight, and it's referred to as the abatement project, okay? And that's what this, this is blown up in this area here. The abatement project is shown, proposed, main components are shown right in this area here. The overall plan is shown in that area, where there were some existing old tanks that they recently decommissioned, containment set, uh, system, concrete that has been recently removed in anticipation of this project. That was done, I don't know, maybe fall of last year. So, what the abatement system is for, it's mandated by the EPA under a consent order that the, that the company is under. And what they need to do is basically implement an entire, entirely new emission system for the furnaces. The furnaces are referred to as furnace number fifteen and sixteen, they're in the rear portion or the eastern portion of the existing building. As we all know, they, they, um, they produce glass here, glass containers. So, there's two big furnaces sitting right here, number fifteen and number sixteen. The emissions all, and the stack currently are all located in this general area, all overhead pipe work exists back there. So, they're going to be relocating, tying into the, the existing furnaces, relocating all the overhead duct work and exhaust system over to this area here. The abatement system is comprised of quite, you know, state-of-the-art technology that I certainly don't know all about, but I'll go through it the best I can. And there are people here from Veralia and the, and the designers of the system that can answer any questions that you may have. I'll just go through it quickly. There is a, there is a, the overhead duct work is shown, connecting up to this area. There's electrostatic precipitator, there is some silos where they store soda ash. The one that gets the most attention is the storage and unloading area of ammonia in this location here. It is my understanding that in the unloading area, the actual vehicle that does the unloading will actually back into this containment area during the unloading process, and then it is stored in this area here. The electrostatic precipitator is shown here, and what is commonly referred to as a scrubber is shown here. Then, that is all sent back to the stack shown here in the solid color. And then that stack releases the exhaust. Also, in addition to this, or under this abatement project, there is a slight increase in, in impervious area. Well, there was just a minor increase until we went through the process and met with the fire department, which I'll get into a little, in a little bit further. But we are also upgrading the drainage, which, right now, the drainage really is not controlled. It drains off overland and dumps into the wetland, runs down the spur line, and then down into this wetland system here. So, there's going to be a modern drainage system implemented for this project as well. So, now, the southern portion was, was upgraded in two thousand and ten, meeting all stormwater management guidelines. Now, this whole eastern portion will be upgraded as well, and that's shown here. Saw cutting and installing modern deep sump catch basins with hoods to an underground detention system, and then back out through the existing culvert that drains under the spur line here. This, this green shown here is the wetland, I failed to mention that. So, on the eastern side, there's a wetland shown here, hundred-foot buffer zone shown in the blue. There's also a wetland system shown here in the southwestern portion of the site, which we, we won't even be over in that area. Here's the buffer zone shown here, so, there is, there is, there is an area, proposed work within the buffer zone. We have filed with conservation also. So, that's basically it. Oh, so, excuse me, so, meeting with the town, the fire department, there was a couple requests. Originally, we weren't proposing to pave this entire area, but he's requesting a safe access and more stable area in case of a rescue operation with this higher apparatus. I mean, hi, higher, uh, components of the, of the abatement system, so that's now all being proposed to be paved. And that's all been upgraded to accommodate that increase in pervious area. There was also a request for a fire hydrant to be placed here, these plans reflect that, and a water line to feed that as well. We've met, informally, I met with the town engineer informally also, went over the entire project with her. She has a comment, letter, I believe, approving it. Um, and that's basically it. If there's any other questions, I can answer them, or any technical questions about the, the emission system or the abatement project itself, if you can, I can answer that.
That you can answer, that was true.
I know my limitations.
Uh, any questions from the board?
No, their, his level of expertise exceeds us as far as the internal components. When you said EPA compliance, you, you, you know, you had me sold, that was it.
Once you said that, I.
They have to do it.
Enough said.
Explain it and all.
Right, right.
That's basically the underlying theme.
Have they started already?
Heighted stack.
Uh, in some of the documentation that was submitted, I, I believe it's around a hundred and sixty, a hundred and sixty-three. One sixty-three, one sixty-four, something, something there. I can get the full scale and get it exact, but it's around there, it's less than one sixty-five, I think.
So, Mike, have they been working on that recently?
Uh, no.
No, not at all?
The only work that took place, like I said, was to decommission the, the abandoned tanks and some of the containment system that was.
It's almost a formality for the amended site.
A hundred and sixty-eight, I'm sorry.
What's the existing stack, do you know?
Um, I legally shot that, but I don't.
Seventy, there you go.
Seventy.
You'll notice it now.
Is the height necessary for the operation of the scrubber? For the reason that's had high.
Is there a reason for it to be that high, or?
Yes, per, sort of the environmental model, per se, um, that's, that was the requirement.
I see, you didn't wanna build something, just to build.
Just for fun.
Uh, okay, Larry, uh, Larry gave a, approval on the amended, subject to the questions, uh, the answers here. Bonnie's got no comments on the, uh. No problems, Scott's got no problems with that. Fire Department, you're taking care of the fire department. Commission of disability, I don't think.
It's the first, didn't even have any comments.
No.
I, I just have one question.
And you got the water letter, I think.
Yeah, they got, oh, excuse me, and we do have the water company, and, uh. They just require an inspector and the backflow provider.
Yeah, and that, but those, those notes that are on that letter are on that plan as well. They've been added.
Just a backflow. Mike, I just have one quick question, when you, eh, eh, and I guess it's just for curiosity purposes. When you talked about the ammonia depot delivery system, can you just explain that real quickly?
Um.
Is it a containment as well, or is it just an enclosed area whereas the ammonia gets delivered? I just.
As the truck will pull in, and now that, that's all proposed as pavement, nice surface backing up right into this unit here, so the truck will actually back into that unit, as it unloads to the storage unit of the ammonia.
Is the area enclosed, or is it open? I, I, I'm.
It's open.
It's open.
So, it's just a parking area effectively?
Yeah.
So, it's not really a containment area?
It's a, it's a basic containment. The truck would pull over it, underneath the truck is impervious concrete that should there be a spill from the truck, it would drain into a containment area.
So, is it like a hundred and ten percent containment area, or is it, what type of containment are we talking about? Fifty percent, over, under, you tell me. You guys used the word containment system, I didn't, so I'm just curious.
One, one containment area is to contain the, the contents of the storage unit, the tank. And that would be a hundred and ten percent of the volume of the tank.
Okay.
The other area is more of a spill containment, and that is where the truck unloading would take place. That's not to, that's not meant to make or contain a truck, tanker truck from rupturing. That's meant to contain, um, you know, hoses, um, you know, a, a broken hose or something like that, an incidental leak during the unloading operation.
So, what's a truck containing, just out of curiosity, upon delivery?
The volume?
Yes.
More or less, I remember cubic, cubic meters, more or less twenty, twenty cubic meters. Anyway, if, I can show you some pictures of the containment.
No, 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 no. I was just curious, because you, 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 you referenced the word containment, but it's not really truly a containment, it's more of a.
Spill prevention.
Spill prevention.
Like a gas station.
That's all it is, okay.
Truck load would be less than a tank.
It's a spill prevention area, it's not a containment area.
But the containment area is designed to hold the contents of the tank.
Correct.
So, you're going for a worst case where the truck ruptures and dumps the entire load of the truck. The truck would contain less than a full tank.
So, the tank should, so the system shouldn't pick up the tank, as if the tank ruptured.
Feeds into the same area, same containment area, so it would hold the truck.
Cause you can't have, because if the truck's there delivering, that means your tank isn't at full capacity, so obviously. But again, it's more of a spill area than there's a containment area, so.
That's correct. Okay, that was the only clarity I was looking for.
I move we approve the amended site plan.
I'll second that.
Then, uh, move by John, uh, second by Nina.
Yeah, the girl at the end.
Further discussion? Lot, all those in favor? Close, unanimous of five. Thank you very much.
We can sign those if you want. What's that?
It's an amended site plan, so we only need babe's signature.
I don't need babe's signature.
Yeah, get it, Mike, and I'll take care of it.
It says I have the original paper ones, I might even left them in the back. No, I don't have.
Get them, get them, I'll take care of it. Okay. Southern Midway Road, Hanaford. Hey, you just want for the right today, or?
But I saw, there at least one, not Bruins, but two, two zip, I saw one.
Feel bad everybody's left, I, uh.
Uh, I'm, I'm representing Hanaford Brothers.
Sir, sir. What's the name of it? Have a card, just.
Uh, I do.
Just spell your last name.
It's L O R D. You're more than welcome. I'm here representing Hanaford Brothers, here with me is Bill McKinney from Hanaford Brothers. He was with me this evening. Uh, what we're proposing this evening, uh, in our proposal is, Hanaford is gonna do a drive-through aisle at their, uh, existing store. This is a brand-new, uh, process that Hanaford roll, is rolling out, where you can order your groceries online and then be given a time to come and pick them up. What happens here is that, this is the overall site right here. Uh, we'll be eliminating three parking spaces in the process of doing this. Uh, but I think that gives us an extra, uh, twenty-seven on-site with that, even taking out the original three. Uh, in the detail of the plan right here, as you come up into this area here and come out, you turn in right here, and there's a call box right here. You announce that you're there, and then come along here, there's a small canopy area right here, where the employees come out from the front of the store, come around, process your order, put the groceries in your car, and then you can drive away.
Do that one more time, cause I'm trying to follow along, but.
Sure, sure.
All you see is black, it's kinda.
Yeah, that's true, you wanna go from the overall.
No, no.
You wanna come right here?
Yeah.
Sure, you drive up this drive aisle right here, and you pull in right here, and right here, there's a call box, where you announce that you're there, and then after you do that, they'll ask you to pull up here under the canopy, which is a little area that is covered that where you.
How many canopies are you putting in?
Further back.
Three?
Little canopy right here.
Just one?
Just one. It serves a little bit of protection when you're processing your order, uh, you put the groceries in the car, and then you drive away.
Flip back a couple pages. Canopies show up before the plan. Keep going.
I was trying to find the plan.
One canopy.
Oh, isn't that special? Is it solar?
No.
She, she shouldn't have made it solar, offset your speaker button.
Is there much call for that?
Actually, it's, it's.
I think it's a pretty, pretty, I, I think it's trying to be a competitive edge, is what it really is.
Yeah, I know Stop and Shop has one, I don't know if it works, though. It's, it's, it's becoming bigger and bigger all the time. More, more and more stores are doing it. Stop and Shop, like you said, has it. I think Roach Brothers now is doing it in the Boston area, right.
If you could bring it to my house, unload it, cook it for me, that'd even be better.
I think, is that the people, oh, it goes beyond that, but yes.
Food for thought.
Well, that, that is a, a point I mentioned in my recommendation, is that, uh, it's not a drive-through pickup window. It's an order ahead.
Yeah.
That's when you pick it up, you order it, and pick it up there.
Yeah. That is, correct.
Right, cause otherwise.
Almost waiting for a taxi or a bus, it's, it's.
Pick up your blooming onion at, uh.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I guess my, just generic question, is it staffing, eh, eh, you can only handle one car at a time? Cause I'm just curious why you wouldn't have multiple pickup centers, if you will, meaning, it, it appears to me that, that drive-through has enough stacking capability that you could stack more than one car at any given time, but it could be a staffing issue, so.
Uh, well, the, that's right. This, this allows, stacking right here would allow about five vehicles from the park car here, all the way back to the call box. Now, that is there really only for a number of reasons, once to get this drive out away from here, but then to create some stacking in case there are one or two that come in before it just gets processed. You can process an order in about four to five minutes, so it's fairly quick.
Okay, so it's.
Right, it's quick in, quick out.
Could be no more than ten minutes.
Absolutely.
Okay, I'm just.
Yeah, no.
Trying to rationalize what, what this will turn into.
Yeah, cause they're not placing the order as they come in, you have to, yeah, you have to place the order.
So, is there a time zone here, someone picks it up at two in the afternoon, and then someone else will be at three in the afternoon, or?
Well, let me just say, uh, the hours run from ten in the morning till eight at night.
And.
The busiest times seem to be ten to noon, four to six.
Okay.
But it operates throughout the entire day. When, when you place your order, you're sort of given a timeframe in which you'll be ready, so you have an idea when to come and pick up.
Okay.
And we need four hours to process the order.
Okay.
So, if you order it at ten in the morning, you can be there at two and.
Be two in the afternoon. So, there isn't a big problem with a whole bunch of people queuing up to pick up their order?
Uh, there will be busier times, say, just like there are with the store when you're shopping in the evening, peak hour. So, we did wanna have enough room at the pickup area so that we could process, as you mentioned, a couple of vehicles at a time. So, it could, for the most part, we're gonna process just one customer at a time under the, uh, that small canopy that, uh, Mr. Lord mentioned. But during the busier time, once you've announced yourself, there could be another car that comes in and announces themselves, and then, uh, we'll have more people processing that order as well. order as well. Because we'd like to avoid having, say you have the third car in line, well, that could be a fifteen-minute wave, we think that's too long. So during those times, you want to have more associates, um, assigned to the Hanaford to go to process, it's got a couple of cars.
Sounds good.
If it, if it becomes problematic, they've got enough room to come back and modify it. They could just stand it all the way.
Just do it, okay.
Bill, presently, what, what Hanaford stores is this being utilized now, and how successful is it as far as wait times and flow and so on and so forth of traffic?
We have two locations right now, one is in North Wyndham, Maine, and another is in Dover Fields, New Hampshire. Uh, and those have been up and running for the last couple of years, so we use those as, uh, two pilot locations to try this out. Um, actually Milford was, uh, I talked to Larry a couple of years ago, actually, and submitted plans to the board, uh, but we decided to focus on those two locations first, uh, to get some experience under our belt. So, uh, we could have as many as five vehicles in, uh, busier stores. We're not anticipating that this store will have, um, the same sales volume running through the Hanaford to go as some others, um, up in, say, the Albany area. Um, so in this case, I think there'll just be fewer vehicles, you know, maybe three.
But Bill, what have you determined? I mean, how long's the lead, how long's the queuing time? I mean, is it, are you down, as you said, fifteen minutes is unacceptable, are you down to an eight, ten-minute term?
Right.
No, our, our, our goal is to be...
I'm just trying to factor in where, where you're at, because, again, the, one thing you got to be cautious of is those who lack patience, I am one of them, and decide the hell with this, and then they just, you know, shoot through, and then, next thing you know, you're stuck with groceries out there, the guy's gone, I mean...
Well, he's already paid for them, so...
Listen, you'd be surprised how many things I...
You'd go anyway.
Anyhow.
There are only so many slots, um, per hour, so we don't want everybody to show up all at once, just for that reason.
So it's a scheduling thing, so you guys have it down more to a science that you're...
Right, within a given hour, so that we can anticipate how many customers will show up.
The only thing I equate it to is, is around New Year's, and people ordering Chinese food, and they tie you in two, and your stuff's not ready until six, so I mean, I'm, I'm just, again, I think conceptually it's a great idea.
It is.
It's just one of those things that I hate to see it fail, uh, but it sounds, if you've been doing it for the last couple of years, that you have it down to acceptable thresholds that you're happy with, and I understand that every store is different, and the need and the base and the desires are all going to be different, but like I said, obviously, I, you know, we wish you all the successes for it, so...
Sure.
You got his voice on voice recognition now, right?
Yeah.
So you know when you have a problem customer coming through.
Well, frankly, we still view this as a pilot program, we'd like to, we'd like to launch it here, uh, in Milford, um, so we'd like to hear our customers' feedback on this, so this is by no means a mature, uh, offering for us.
From business perspective, is it a good idea? I was down at Hanaford yesterday for one item, and I wound up with a basket full, different things.
Were you hungry when you walked in?
No.
Oh. That always happens.
Oh gee, I could use that.
You raise a very good point, we'd, we'd rather you be in the stores, you end up with a, with a few bags instead of just one.
Well, that's why you put the milk in the back, you got to go down the aisles.
Right, but we really want to give customers, um, additional convenience, so if somebody wants this, this is what we want to provide.
There are a number of people that work really late, that I know, that use the pickup service at Stop &amp; Shop in different places, and they wouldn't have it another, any other way. So I think this'll work, I think, I think you'll see a lot of people that work late nights, coming to pick it up, you know, that sort of thing.
What's the distance from the face of the building to the edge of the drive aisle in the front there?
The face of the building to the front of the drive aisle?
No, the face of the building to the face of the drive aisle out, out to, out in front, yeah, from there, yeah, what's the existing building setback from the drive aisle?
Probably, if that's thirty-one feet, probably close to twenty feet.
No, I'm, I was just worried because we, at, at Shaw's, people exiting the building, in which case you, you've got a door right there, you've got people exiting the building, and you've got a, you've got a blind spot because the building and the drive aisle is so close, and I didn't want that same situation with additional cars coming out.
Yeah, no, you're back here, that's why the car is back here, so when you walk across, there's plenty of visibility.
Yeah, I thought they were, I just looked.
They're much wider outside, watch.
Yeah.
This is a much better design when they built the, uh...
Yes, yes.
All right, baby.
Let's quickly make a motion.
Okay. Let's move the board.
I'll move, uh, to...
Move by, uh, oh, wait a minute, we got to go through the, we got to go through the notes. First of all, one, he's, uh, town engineer, have you changed that on the plans?
Uh, I, I, I will, there's one, uh, there's a note right here, uh, this needs to be up here to, to oh four, on the detailed plan, there's an addition problem, we will do that, that's not a problem.
And you're going to come back with that, and my la, uh...
I guess I would just update the my la and give it to Larry, I mean, just, yeah, make that condition approval.
Other segment's required as well.
Yeah. Okay, Scott's got no, uh, no issues, uh, fire chief's got no issues, water, water company does not do anything.
Can I address the Commission on Disabilities letter? That's the only one that's...
Certainly.
Uh, the, I'll, I'll go from the bottom up, the do-not-enter sign.
We showed it on the plan right here on the sidewalk, they suggested we move it back, which we can do, we'll show them on the new plan, that's not a problem. Uh, number true, number two, the ADA, uh, we have an ADA ramp right here that we're bringing down for this crosswalk, uh, he might have not seen this detail over here, and that's because this is flush and this ramps up, goes across, and there's another ADA that comes down on that side, so I think those are all covered. I, I just think he was looking for a mirror image of this, but the rating doesn't allow for that. Uh, the first one is the, the one I, we have, we have a problem with, and that is, this system isn't set up like a bank or fast food, where you can just go up and order, or you can just go in and you wait in line. This is one where you order ahead, you have a set time to go and get in, it's, it's, it's sort of like an ATM machine, I mean, if you can't use an ATM machine, then you have to go to, into a bank. Here, you have to be able to use the call box to come up to do this. If you didn't have that, and you had a trip service, you wouldn't know who was there, you'd have a, it'd be, it'd be chaos within the store trying to manage that process. So I understand the problem, I see what it is, but logistically...
Well, the other problem is, is unfortunately, you have to articulate your name and/or a number.
Right.
And to his point, those that, uh, you know, have physical interaction, uh...
There is an A.
Mobility impairments aren't going to be able to use it anyhow, because unfortunately, it's, I, I'm assuming you're going to have some sort of camera system out there, but still, you don't get identified by facial recognition, you get identified by either utilization of your name or code, or whatever you guys are doing.
Very similar to an A...
Kind of a moot point, they can't be, they cannot be addressed.
Very similar to an ATM machine. You have to, you have to punch in, punch in who you are.
I think that you could have a system that trips, that turns on the mic, so the person could say his name. The call box is just a call box to go in, that, that same function could handle by a multitude of different methods. A tripping of it, you know, as you drive past it, or whatever, would, would, would turn the mic on so that that person could then call, could then talk. The call box doesn't serve a purpose other than to alert somebody in, inside that somebody's there, who then, you then speak, I would assume, after you call, correct?
Uh, that is, they call, they pull up and they announce right who they are and their order.
Well, you hit the call box, then, then they say, okay, I'm, I'm here listening, tell me who you are. There's another mechanism to do that. It doesn't have to be a push button to do that, you could have a, you, you could have a LED, some, some form of light, some, some form of, of radar that would shoot across that would also do the same purpose. I, I'm not sure I understand why it has to be a call box. The issue with it is with the call box, and someone's ability to press a button. I believe it's multiple methods to, to do that.
Well, you can do a sensor pad.
Yeah, any, any of them would, would, there's, there's a multitude of...
I missed that, that, that's not what I got out of his letter, but if that's what you're thinking of.
Well, that's what I'm thinking, yeah. I, I, you know, he's trying to replace the, the call button, because he's saying people can't reach outside the car to press the call.
Again, I didn't get that out of his letter, so...
I'm thinking of other ways of doing that, and that may be, I'm not sure, I'm not sure how much, you know, in terms of our regulations, we have to say with that, but I would think it's something that you may want to consider, and that he's absolutely right, if this, I would think this is a great service for those that may be physically impaired, and that, you know, their ability to use the system, where they have somebody at home that could take the stuff in, would be worthwhile.
That is true, but like, like Bill said, is this is really starting to be a pilot program, it would be wise, I think, to try it like this, to see if there are problems. I don't believe we've experienced that problem anyplace else, so I, I don't know that it's ever been a problem, although it could be, but I mean, customer feedback is going to tell us, not only on this one, but all of the ones that are being proposed, what's the best way to utilize this?
That may, may not be true, I guess somebody that's physically handicapped may see that and say, I, there's no way I can use it, I'd never go ahead and use it.
Well, you, you sign up inside the store, so, you know, you'd be indoctrinated to the whole thing, so they would know immediately, uh, before you ever get out there to even try to use this, they, they would know the system.
I would like to see...
Sensor pad.
Sensor pad.
I don't think, I don't think he's, again, I didn't pick that up in his initial letter, but...
Part of your...
I think it speaks volumes for Hanaford as a company.
It almost sounds like it's there, because you have a car sensor.
To show your willingness to be creative and working with those with immobility and disabilities.
It's there, it's there, I mean, according to this, you have, you have a car sensor anyways, as part of the, as part of the things that are there, if I'm reading this correctly, which I think serves the same purpose as the call box, I mean, I'm not sure what a car sensor would do otherwise.
Yeah, we certainly have a commitment towards providing service to all of our customers, um, I'd be glad to look into that, I'd prefer an approval as proposed, and, um, I'll, I'll look into that, I'm just not sure what that would entail, um, it may not be workable for us, in which case we wouldn't proceed, um, which if that's the board's favor, that's up to you folks.
I mean, I would almost look at what you have there, because based on what, what you're showing here, there's a car sensor that's part of this unit, and I don't know what else it would be sensing other than that at that point in time, so it sounds like the equipment may actually be part of this unit as is.
I would like to check, I would like to check into the ADA, uh, the mass access, uh, I'd like to, I'd like to talk to the inspector, one of the inspector that I know, a couple of them I know, see what...
I assume there's some mobility of someone who's driving a vehicle, there's some degree of...
I agree, but whether they can reach out to push the button, uh, that's, I think that's their question, and what if...
So where's the other sensor physically located?
I just think it always...
The vehicle sensor?
To that point, to, to your point, Joe.
It's a call box.
It's just more efficient of a system to have a sensor pad and eliminate the button at all.
In a loop at all?
Seemingly, a lot of times with push buttons, people are either too far away and end up opening their doors on a door.
Just putting wire up to it.
But that already has the existing technology.
I'm just reading what's on the thing.
Yeah.
It says sensor lane, yes, speaker lane sensor, so I don't know what that represents.
Yeah, I think it's, I, I think what's shown on the plan is just wiring to it, there's no under, under...
Right, there's no under wiring.
Drive sensor pad.
It doesn't have to be, there's multiple ways of doing it, I'm not saying that that's the only way, that, that's a, that's a car sensor. That works fine with me.
This is a speaker.
It's down here.
Says sensor.
Yeah, I know.
I don't know what that represents, the word could be a...
Speaker's one thing, lane sensor is the other thing, I'm, I'm referencing the thing that says lane sensor.
So, we have two locations with these boxes in them, and they're push-button boxes, and there's an audio, so when you push the button, it sends a signal into the store, and our associates will welcome you to the store, you announce yourself, and then we ask you to pull forward to the canopy, so that's the approach we'd like to take here in Milford as well. Um, I don't mind looking into that idea, um...
I, I guess I think, I think Mr. Minini is expressing a concern that we need to make sure that, in fact, and he, he's willing to go look, that that's acceptable, I mean, there, I, I'm not sure what the ADA requirements in Massachusetts are.
Right, well, we would, obviously, if there's any federal or state or local ADA requirements, we would comply with all regulations for this proposal and anything else we'd be doing.
It seems to me that if a person is handicapped, they can't push the button, they wouldn't use the system.
System.
But that, that may be illegal.
And, and to that point, John, if they didn't have to push the button, maybe they would use the system, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, the question is whether that is illegal or not, you have to provide access to all, I don't know whether it goes to this or not.
Well, no, it's up to the person, you're not saying you can't use it.
Let's let, we're saying...
No, that's, 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 that's nowhere near the law.
You're going to have to change it.
You would have to provide the access.
Sorry?
You're going to have to change the plans anyway, in my la, you're going to come back next week with a change, and we'll, we'll land, two weeks, I should be, and then we'll know, know.
But he could, uh, check with Mike Nicholson.
If not, I will, I will get ahold of, uh, Larry during the week, let him know, and he, he...
Yeah, my, you know, Mike references...
Well, and he can contact Mike Nicholson, and get with him to...
Yeah, Mike makes his own...
Maybe you should do that, Larry.
I like, I'd like to talk to an inspector on it, who...
Yeah, the thing, the thing in that one section that Mike didn't reference is, is an actual section of the Massachusetts State Code, so there may not be a requirement, and that's fine, if there isn't, then, you know, I, I, I think you, you owe it to, to all of your customers to look into it and see if it does work, but if that's not the way it works, that's fine, but I think we as a board want to make sure there isn't a, a reference to Massachusetts State Code that precludes the way you're doing it, and it's part of our approval, and so, next meeting we'll be able to do that.
And it could be that if there's a customer that wants to use it, it could be retrofitted, it's like here tonight, there's no, if there was a deaf person here, you would have no one to interpret, so typically what would happen is that, uh, someone would notify town hall to say that there would be a hearing impaired person here, and they'd request an interpreter, and the town would have an obligation to provide that. But this evening, there isn't anyone here, um, so if somebody contacted us in the store and said that's something they needed, perhaps that's something that we, you know, we could accommodate in a similar way.
Yeah, I think we just, we just want to be comfortable that, in fact, the way you're doing it meets Massachusetts Code, it does, I don't think we have an issue with it, I think it's then up to you as to how you want to go forward at that point, but, I think we'd like to just make sure that we're comfortable with it that way.
Last thing we tried to be is nitpicking, but...
Yeah, no, I think it's great, and this is our first location in Massachusetts, so I think these are great questions.
Well, that's why I'm saying you didn't mention a Massachusetts one, and, and I don't, I mean, I know portions of the Massachusetts Code, but this is certainly not an area that I've dabbled in before, and, and I don't want, you know, if there is something there, we need, we need to know about it, just to make sure. If there isn't, that's, that's our role. If there isn't, that's all we'll.
Yeah, and it'll be a great learning for us, because we can apply that to other locations in Mass as we grow this out. So, this is the first one we'd like to try here in Milford in Mass.
Continue to.
Sounds good.
Let's continue. Continue to the next meeting.
Yeah.
The next meeting.
Yeah. Motion to continue at the next meeting.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Aye, opposed?
Thank you. I mean, I don't think we have any other issues, you know, that's the only thing that we had, just so you know. I mean, it's just straightening that out, cleaning up the drawings.
I'm number seven.
Ernie, you're the last one.
Let's do six.
That's all right.
Are you still here?
Open your eyes.
Do you want me to read this? Do you want me to read this?
You should ask David.
Go ahead and read it.
Sure, go ahead.
ZBA variance, Kevin Hunter, Three Field Pond Road. The applicant requests a variance to construct a 14 by 32 detached accessory structure on the subject property to be 12 feet from the rear to south property line, 30 feet's required. The property is a very irregularly shaped lot and is adjacent to the sewer pump station that is located at the northwesterly corner of the property along Field Pond Road.
Kevin.
Right.
We're number seven.
We're number seven.
I took it out.
I took it out.
The lot configuration could have otherwise accommodated the proposed structure, but for the intrusion created by the location of the sewer pump station in its current location, therefore, recommend a favorable report be forwarded to the ZBA. It's the most irregularly shaped lot in the history of Milford.
Is that the most irregularly shaped lot I've ever seen?
I was just going to say, whoa.
And actually, there's a very good photograph that Larry attached to his report that shows it better than this plan does.
Yeah, I see it. It's really long.
Where's the hardship, though?
I mean, that is long.
They didn't realize they had an irregularly shaped lot when they bought it? I guess they missed that.
Let me, let me tell you all about it. The Hunters own this property, and it is the lot as Larry described, and again, I'm Ernie Pettenary, just for the record, and it's got 800 feet of frontage on the road, and it's about eight and a half feet wide at this end. It's got a jog over here because of the sewer pump that is providing the relief for the subdivision in which it's placed. A few years ago, they built a pool for their eldest son by way of therapy for the boy, and it's worked out exceptionally well. And they were ready to put in what would otherwise be described as a shed, but a structure, a pavilion kind of a structure, at the end of the pool house, and they discovered, lo and behold, that they were within the setback. And so, they want to do it the right way, and so, they consulted with the engineering firm Gary Aaron Helen, and they've hired me to come and ask for the relief from the zoning board. Larry's recommendation is right on the money. If this lot went all the way here, they would be able to put the pool house closer to the road, the pool a little closer to the road, et cetera. They've got a wetland problem to the immediate east of the property, and they have no other place on the property that they could have constructed the pool when they built it, and now they really don't have any place to put the pool house pavilion without impeding the view of the pool, and their primary goal is to make sure that they can supervise the child when he's using the pool. The other thing that happened when we went along here is they discovered that the deck that they had put on the house with a validly issued building permit in 2007 or '08 also encroached into the rear yard. So, what we did was we combined that into the application as well. The abutting property is the town of Milford property. That was one of the pieces of land that was being looked at for the school. Again, excellent relationships with the neighbors, not an unreasonable request. We don't believe this is all heavily wooded. This is a quasi-industrial business kind of a use next door, and there doesn't seem to be any problem in his conversations with the abutters. In terms of the hardship at this point, the argument would follow that the inability to locate this pool house inhibits or limits in some way the maximization of the use of the pool for therapeutic purposes for their kid, and at that point, we believe that that together with the shape of this lot makes it fairly straightforward in terms of the request of the variance.
I guess I, I guess I don't agree. I, you know, I mean, I think we're trying to shove the proverbial in the proverbial at this point. I don't know, certainly, this person bought this lot knowing what this looked like, and because, because of the unique condition of this, and we're trying to put a pool in, now we want to put this in, we put a deck in that didn't meet, and we're just going to try to keep pounding stuff in here, and to hell with zoning, we'll come back afterwards and tell you what we think. Can't say they may get it at zoning board, but in terms of me sending a favorable, I don't think there's an inalienable right for somebody to say, I should have a pool house. And a pool house that's that size certainly is no attempt to try to not meet the, you know, the zoning requirements.
Well, the setback, though, Mr. Caligoni would take it almost in any, no matter how, even if they made it only two feet wide, they'd be in the setback. But I respect your position on it, I understand.
Well, I, that's there, why couldn't they put it next to the deck?
Again, what they're, what they're trying to do is they're trying to supervise the use of the pool by the child.
By, where are they supervising it from?
From inside here, for people that don't want to spend.
I don't think that, 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 that is going through the, if you're, if you're out at the corner of the deck, that maybe you can't see, but if you're in the house, you can see the whole pool from that area.
But again, I'm answering the question why putting it here doesn't work for them, and that's the answer to it. They'd like the use of the pool in this highest, flattest part of the lot where they put the pool in, and your points are all well taken, and I respect them. But again, that's, that's what they're left with, and they really don't have any other direction to turn, so that's why we're here.
Yeah.
So, the pool house is going to be basically an oversized shed, if you will?
Basically.
And the argument is they need a roof of sorts.
Correct.
For various reasons, you don't want to be in the sun, what have you, but yet it's fully enclosed.
No, it's going to be the pavilion style. It's not, it's going to have one side exposed, but it's going to have a portion of it enclosed, correct.
Just out of curiosity questions, and you may not be able to answer this, but I'm going to ask it anyhow. Where do they evacuate their pool water to?
I have no idea.
Just curious if they evacuate into the town of Milford.
I have no idea.
I'm just curious.
Any other questions in the board? Mr. Pleasure of the board.
I didn't miss.
On favorable?
I'll second that. I don't see a hardship either, and I don't understand how this is more therapeutic.
I mean, I don't, well, I think, I think it becomes, if, right, if, I think we get into evaluating people's hardship as to what this child's hardship is or isn't, I think we're in the wrong business. I mean, if, you know, it's very difficult for us to evaluate who's hardship is who's hardship for that particular purpose.
Again, the pool's there. The question is to whether or not the placement of that becomes an egregious zoning violation is a question that people can differ on.
I think it's a luxury. I don't think it's a hardship. I think what they're looking for is glamorous, but I don't think it represents a hardship. That's just me, myself, and I.
Okay, and the.
I second it.
I know, I understand. And this is asking, asking for the variance on the deck.
As well, correct.
I don't have a problem with the deck, I should have. Joe, do you have a problem with the deck?
The deck's there.
The legitimate building permit, I think that, precluding the deck.
I amend my motion to give a favorable recommendation to the deck, but no other building on the side. Or no other, no other.
But not to the.
No other zoning.
Relief.
What do you think, John?
Second to that.
Second. We're moving second, we give relief on the deck, and no unfavorable recommendation for the pool house. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
What's the vote, I haven't seen.
Three to two.
Three to two.
Okay.
Do I hear another motion?
A move we send a favorable recommendation to the ZBA for the deck and the pool house.
Second?
Oh, I'll second.
Moved in second, we give a favorable recommendation, send a favorable recommendation to the ZBA. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed?
Still.
Three and two. Three in favor, two opposed.
Thank you, both.
Going back to six. Have a pleasant night, guys.
Number six. Yes, okay. The applicant, 20 Muriel Lane, applicant requests a variance to construct a 12 by 16, attach the accessory structure on the subject property five feet from the north property line.
Five feet, huh? Why not just go a foot? Again, I'm with Larry on this one. I don't see any cause of hardship, and I don't understand why, based on the property, why he has to go so far back. And with that, I'd be agreeing with Larry.
Larry gave an unfavorable before, wanted to recommend an unfavorable report to the ZBA.
Is there any clue what this is? No, I know where.
Says a shed, but I don't know, I don't know if that's really a shed at 12 by 16.
That's a big shed.
I think it's the second house.
They kept the size smaller, what they had to ask.
Well, it still doesn't mean, you're only allowed to go half the, half the center. Fifteen required, seven and a half, he's only five.
I'm saying the size of the building.
Yeah, you have to make the building smaller, and you have to move it.
You can only have 120. I think it's a 10 by 12.
Yeah, 10 by 12, Max.
Yep.
Oh, you get bigger than 10 by 12, you can have a 10 by 12 without taking out a building.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, the 10 by 12 is also cut off in terms of being half of the setback.
Yes.
So, you could also get it to seven and a half if you didn't get the building permit. Once you go to the building permit, you have to meet zoning. I, did you make a motion back?
I will, I just wanted to give you my, I don't know if anyone else had input, but as I said, I'm happy to make it unfavorable.
I'll second that if you're making that.
I am.
But moved in second, we give, send an unfavorable recommendation to the ZBA. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's four in favor, one abstention. I'm not sure.
I'm abstaining.
I'm abstaining. I'm not sure.
Four, one unfavorable.
Four, four unfavorable, right.
Four unfavorable, one abstention.
I'm not sure.
All right, what else we have?
Okay.
You want to skip to number nine, just quickly?
No, it's number eight.
It was two to nothing a minute ago.
Well, I actually have something.
Number eight, my, my thoughts in this is they should pass, there's too many questions and too many unknowns on this. There's no rush to do it. I think we should rec, I would like to see us recommend that they pass over the article. Get together with everyone and get it right and do it right the first time. Not pass on, not pass, break it up and do one, two, or three, pass over the whole thing, and then do it.
Well, the, as it stands, the one, two, or three really doesn't exist. Reno said that at the first meeting, but that doesn't exist. We can only act on what's in front of us, which is, which is the whole article as it currently states. If, if we want to, we have no, we have, yeah, we don't have to act on this whatsoever. It's a request from them to give a recommendation, however, the planning board has, you know, doesn't have to do that. That being said, based on what's in front of us, I don't know, I, I agree with you that I'd like to see them pass over it, but based on what's in front of us, I think, as far as I'm concerned, we have to, my feeling is I'd like to give an unfavorable based on what's in front of us.
Second.
You know, I can't force them to pass over it, so I think we have to tell them where we're coming from, as opposed to.
No, again, I agree with the unfavorable, but I think, again, to pass over. I'm not against, again, not one of us are against the concept itself.
No, we're not.
Kevin won't write it that way.
No, 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 but I also believe that they could, that they could maintain it, even if that meant the selectmen created the new conservation restriction subcommittee, whatever, in that any approvals from that point on had to go through town meeting floor for any changes. You know, I think that that's a logical step, but with that said, that's not what's in front of us, so.
It's not there.
Based on what's in front of us, I cannot.
And we do understand what's going on, it's not, yeah.
Right.
When you disagree with somebody, they're here, they don't understand. We understand what it is. We understand, we also understand the way our thoughts on it and our thoughts are totally different.
It is understandable that we, we believe in the Conservation Commission and what should be done. What we don't, what we don't seem to, it should be open space protected. We paid 1.9 million dollars for this piece of property. Walden Woods didn't, we didn't give them a dime. So, I think that we, as a board, should also look at the money issue that we pay, that the conservation, under the Conservation Commission, that's where it should stay, and I know that we have to look at the whole, the whole part of it, but I keep on going back to the fact that the town approved at 1.9 million, $7,800 for the mapping, and we all agree on that. To agree on the whole package is very difficult, so I agree to either give it an unfavorable or, and I hate to be wishy-washy, but, you know, I like the first part, but I, the second part is so unknown to me. I like to meet these people that are going to be taking over our property, so.
Not going to be taken over.
But, but see, this is where we all get, we all get muddled.
This is where we all get confused. I think we need to be, as a board, I think we need to know a little bit more about who are they.
I think Joe's right.
I don't think, I don't think that's the issue, to be totally honest. I mean, it could be nobody, the question becomes, and I've heard this multiple times over the radio, that we have staff looking at this, and they were writing this thing, and Larry, I haven't seen the changes. I brought up, geez, what if we want to put it in playground? Could we do that? No.
Can't put up a flagpole either.
Can I put in, can I put in a life course? No, we can't do that. You know, can I put in a Braille course? If we wanted to have, down the Cape Town and Dennis, they have the Braille course. No, we couldn't do that. Well, maybe those things are worthwhile, but we can't do that right now, based on, based on the way the thing's written, and there's this, this thing that, we're going to approve it, and then the selectmen are going to be the final ones to make the agreement with, with trustees and reservations as to what that agreement is or isn't, based on what they come back to or not. And as I said at the first meeting, and I'm still that way, I'm not happy with that. That needs to come back to town meeting to get approved, at least for the consigliere portion.
Listen, can we just.
So, that's, that's why I'm giving a negative.
And also, I agree with you on the part of the front portion of the property. The front portion of the property at Louisa Lake and sideways going to the right, the consigliere property, should be taken out of the passive recreation area, part of it, or done with an active recreation part, because that is the part that's where it's active, where Louisa Lake was done over, there's active recreation going on there, and the consigliere property should be drawn across.